Well, this is the November seventeen meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the pleasure.
And it's one nation under God, individual liberty and justice overall.
The next decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty five.
Effective, the effective date of your variance will be Friday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. The date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory fifteen day appeal period will expire on Sunday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty five. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Voting tonight is Bruce Conroy, Tom Wolfher, Bob Prentice, Karen Raddis, and myself, Joe Rusick. First variance request is twenty-five dash zero three four, variance request for Buckley. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have staff comments that read as follows. Applicant seeks variance approval for accessory building of five hundred and forty-six square feet and plus or minus twelve feet in height. Where maximum three hundred square feet and ten feet in height are permitted to construct a pool house at Nine Nutmeg Court in an RU forty district. The parcel is point five nine acres in an open space subdivision, RU forty district. RU forty open space subdivisions are provided lesser setback requirements and double the building coverage maximums, twenty percent versus ten percent, due to the requirement of open space in common ownership to be left in undisturbed natural state. Should this have been a standard RU forty district, the existing site would exceed building coverage and additional variance request would have been required. The property has two existing accessory structures, one of which is already adjacent to the in-ground pool. Where there is no quantity, while there is no quantity limit on accessory structures, this office cannot discern the hardship granting relief for a third non-compliant and oversized one. The applicant should consider an alternate pool house designed slash proposal to comply with three hundred square feet maximum area and ten feet maximum height, which would require no variance. The board could also consider lessening the request by approving the building portion of the accessory structure of three hundred and sixty-five square feet and eliminating the one hundred and eighty-three square feet of the pavilion, which is a roof over a patio of the structure. Any approval should be conditioned upon limited plumbing, less than full sanitary amenities installed, or no plumbing installation to prevent creation slash definition of a dwelling unit. There is also correspondence, an interdepartmental correspondence received October thirtieth from Inland and Wetlands, and that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Welcome. Pull the microphones up nice and close to you so we can hear you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Buckley, Nine Nutmeg Court, Wallingford, Connecticut.
And Jim Buckley, Nine Nutmeg Court.
Say, welcome. Please explain what you're trying to do here.
I actually have a prepared statement, if you wouldn't mind me reading that.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Members of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals, we appreciate the opportunity to present our case for variance to allow a third accessory building on our property. While we understand that this request does not meet the current square footage and height requirements, we urge you to consider the following points. As longtime residents of Wallingford for over thirty-one years, we have deep-rooted commitment to this community and have dedicated ourselves to not only improving our home, but also enhancing the overall character and value of our neighborhood. Our history of responsible home improvements include a family room addition, bedroom pool table room, front porch, finished bonus room, finished basement, and a large kitchen remodel. Each of these projects have been undertaken with care and respect for our neighbors and in compliance as we properly secured permits from the town. These improvements have not only increased the value of our home, but have also positively impacted the neighborhood, contributing to the overall aesthetic and property values in our area. The proposed third accessory building is designed to be both functional and aesthetically pleasing. It will not be visible from the front of our home and will blend seamlessly with the existing structures on our property. We have discussed this proposal with our surrounding neighbors and we're pleased to report that there is no opposition. In fact, we have support here tonight. The intent behind this new accessory building is to create a comfortable workspace where I can work from home while enjoying the outdoors with my dog. Although our children no longer live at home, they visit frequently, and we want to provide a welcoming space for our family gatherings. This building will not be used for storage and will not have plumbing, ensuring that it serves its intended purpose without contributing to any potential issues related to overdevelopment. The two accessory buildings currently on our property serve specific purposes. One shed is used for lawn equipment and outdoor furniture storage, while the other shed adjacent to the pool is primarily for food, for pool equipment, accessories, and additional storage. The proposed building will not add to the storage capacity, but will instead provide a functional space for work and relaxation. We would like to draw to your attention two similar cases presented to the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals on September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, where both were unanimously approved. The first is regarding the Catrona property at one thirty-four Chimney Hill Road. The applicant sought a variance for a building that exceeded the permitted square footage and was more than double our request. Their new structure was to store tractors, implements, woodshop space, and for general storage, whereas their existing structure on the property housed motor vehicles and storage. The second is regarding the Carrera property at thirteen sixty-three Durham Road. The applicant sought a variance for a building that exceeded the permitted square footage, which again was more than our request. Their new structure was to be a workspace, play space, and eventually personal office space, whereas their existing structure on their property stored motor vehicles. This precedent demonstrates that the board has previously recognized the value of thoughtful, well-planned structures that enhance the property without negatively impacting the neighborhood. While there are other, while there actually is a number of other properties in town where three or more accessory buildings that do comply with town regulations, some of these structures are not appealing to look at, are visible from the road, and detract from the overall neighborhood's character. In contrast, our proposed building, which will not be visible, sorry, from the road, is designed to be tasteful and complimentary to the existing landscape, ensuring that it enhances rather than detracts. Lastly, I wish to share that is now public knowledge that just over two years ago, I was diagnosed with a rare autoimmune disease that has significantly impacted my quality of life. While I may appear unaffected, I live with constant pain, sight, and mobility challenges. This new space will provide me with a sanctuary where I can work, relax, and entertain comfortable, in a comfortable environment, away from the harshness of the sun as I navigate the challenges of my condition. In conclusion, we respectfully ask the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals to consider the positive improvements we have made over the past three decades, the support from our neighbors, the thoughtful design of the proposed building, and my personal health circumstances. Granting this variance will not only enhance my quality of life, but will also continue to reflect the values of our community, which is supporting residents who are committed to improving their homes and contributing positively to our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration. We hope you will see the merit in this request and grant the variance of the third accessory building on our property as it is designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I, the, looking at your pictures, first off, what you're proposing is a nice-looking building, but down to the nitty-gritty. The red building in the picture, that stores your lawn equipment and stuff like. And then the gray building is all the.
Pool.
Pool stuff. I think part of the, probably hard to understand for some of us, I'll speak for myself, is that they're all close to the pool. So if they were in the back of the property, probably it'd be easier to understand why you would want to do this. So this, this building is just going to be mainly to host event, you know, parties for, or sit outside or whatever.
Sit outside and actually, I work from home and I would be working in that space as well, on the outside porch, covered porch, as well as then inside if it were raining.
Okay. The, the red, the red building in the picture, that's the proposed building?
The, the one, they're, cor- correct.
Okay, I was thinking that was.
No, the, the, there's, the, the, the third one, or there's two existing. The pool, the one adjacent to the pool and then one in the way back on the left-hand corner.
That's one, yeah. Okay, and where's the third one that's?
It would be at, behind, at the end.
Oh, okay, I see that one now. I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem.
Okay. So that third one is like a barn in the, in the back?
Yes.
Okay, that looks like a nice building, too.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody got any questions for the applicant?
So can you reiterate what your hardship is, that you want to go higher and bigger?
For spa, it, it, the hardship is, well, technically, there is no hardship, because usually that's topographical with the land. The space is what we're looking for, open and airy, and it's not going to be visible from vantage point from the front or the sides. The only neighbor that would be seeing it were, would be the Marones, which are next to us on the one side.
I'm just gonna say, just, just so you know, that when we've seen applications in front of us for this size of a, oh, sorry about that. So when we've seen buildings this size, we've, we've denied them in the past. There's a recent one we just denied for the same pool house type thing for height. So, I mean, you brought up the ones that we approved, or were approved by the board, not necessarily by me. But that's.
It's, yes, it's less than two feet above the required.
Well, I understand, but an inch is above.
Correct.
Just for clarification, on that one that we denied, they had no permit to build that. So that's why he came in front of us.
I understand.
We, we turned him down.
We'd also turn down.
It's different, I'm, I'm just, for clarification, we did turn that down, but because he built it without a permit, or coming in front of us, period.
The, the height was discussed in that meeting, though, too.
At point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we're back on this one.
The, the referenced applications were not accessory buildings. There were special exceptions for garages, so they have a higher height and higher, so it was area, just to clarify. The Carrera property was just in front of you. That was a garage. Even if we don't use it for motor vehicles, it, if, garages have higher height and higher area allowances. So it's a different, it's apples and oranges, just to clarify.
Yeah, I just, I have a hard time with it, because the town's recommending you can sort of get it, in a way, and I don't see here the hardship. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? No? Tom? No. Is there any, Karen?
I, I just wanted to say, I know I didn't say it earlier, I think we, we got going, is I'm abstaining from voting on this. Mr. Gross is voting in my stead, since we're neighbors.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Come up to the microphone, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Randall Radditz, Twelve Nutmeg Court in Wallingford. My wife is Karen, as you know. Normally, I would refer to you as Bob, Bruce, Tom, Joe, Care, and Bob. Tonight, I'll refer to you formally as the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Buckleys are tremendous neighbors. Everything they have done has enhanced both their house and our neighborhood, and we'd like that to be accommodated for them. Mary talked briefly about her physical condition, and the hardship is not on the town. The hardship is on Mary Buckley with her health. The two buildings, and CEO Torre spoke. We are in an RU forty open space, so there's no issue with respect to the number of buildings that are there, that falls within the footprint. The only variances are the twelve feet versus ten and the sixty-four feet over the three hundred, sorry, the three hundred square feet of the building. The other additional eighty is more like an overhang of a patio. To clarify, Chairman Rusick, the one building is way in the back, away from the pool. And if you all go around like Karen does and look, you can barely see that from the road as it's nestled behind some trees. The other building is used for strictly pool supplies and changing room and the like. This building would allow our neighbors to maintain the quality of their life in that house. Karen and I, and why Karen is abstaining, see directly across. You don't see anything from their house because they maintain it so well. I fully urge, and I can't speak for Karen, I fully urge for this to be approved. The other neighbor that Mary Buckley spoke about is at Seven Nutmeg Court. He was going to be here today, but he literally just got out of the hospital about fifteen minutes before the meeting. They quickly handwrote a pen letter that I would like to read here, enter into the minutes, and then give to CEO Torre.
Yes, go ahead.
This, "To Town of Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals, variance number twenty-five dash oh thirty-four, Buckley, Nine Nutmeg Court, for accessory building pool house. We had received the legal notice, but are unable to attend in person tonight. We would like it to be known that we do not object to the proposed pool house construction next door to our home. Thank you. Gregory Marone, signed. Christine Marone, signed. Seven Nutmeg Court." They are fully in favor of it as well. So it's two feet, twelve to ten. You don't even see the difference. It's sixty-four feet. You don't even see that, nobody sees it. There's no hardship to the town. I would propose to let Mary's hardship be lessened slightly, and you have an open mind, as you have in the past, to view this and hopefully approve it on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody here to speak against this application? Hearing, seeing none, is there anything further you'd like to add before I close the public hearing?
No, just appreciate your time and consideration.
On a close of public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board. Just, Amy, when your, Bob Gross is voting for Karen.
Mr. Chairman, variance request for accessory structure of five hundred and forty-seven square feet at Non-Nutmeg Court, as shown on portion of as-built lot, forty-two Fair Lawn Farm subdivision dated nine eleven ninety-two, received ten fifteen twenty-five, and submitted documents received ten fifteen twenty-five. Subject to comments from the environmental planner, inland wetlands, received November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Accessory structure to have limited plumbing with no sanitary amenities. And number three, accessory structure may not be defined as per Wallingford zoning regulations or used as a dwelling unit. Variance request for accessory structure height of.
You want to do one at a time, or you, yes, one at a time?
So moved.
Second.
This is for the area of the accessory structure motion to approve. Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rusick.
Yes to approve.
Variance request for accessory structure height of plus or minus twelve feet at Non-Nutmeg Court, as shown on portion of as-built lot, forty-two Fair Lawn Farm subdivision dated nine eleven ninety-two, received ten fifteen twenty-five, and submitted documents received ten fifteen twenty-five. Comments to, comments from the environmental planner, inland wetlands, received November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Accessory structure to have limited plumbing, no sanitary amenities, and accessory structure may not be defined as per Wallingford zoning regulations or used as a dwelling unit. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross, this is for the height. Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Conroy.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rusick.
Yes to approve. Both variances have been denied. You need at least two, I mean, four yes votes. So we had three yes, two no. Sorry. The next variance request is twenty-five dash zero three five for Brickley at twenty Sorrento Road. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have staff comments that read as follows. Applicant seeks variance approval for side yard of thirteen feet, where twenty feet is required and twenty-four feet exists to construct and attach three hundred and forty square foot pavilion to the rear of the dwelling at twenty Sorrento Road in an RU eighteen district. The proposed pavilion extends beyond the northwest side of the dwelling by eleven feet. The dimensions of the proposed pavilion are seventeen feet by twenty feet. The pavilion may extend four feet to the northwest beyond the dwelling and remain compliant. The applicant should consider shifting the same proposed pavilion to the southeast by seven feet and be compliant or alternately redesign dimensions to remove a hundred and nineteen square feet from the side setback. Multiple compliant options exist, which eliminates existence of hardship to allow noncompliance with the regulations. Any nonconforming structure previously or currently existing in this location is not a legal nonconformity, and therefore, a rebuild cannot be claimed. Mr. Chairman, we also have correspondence received today from the applicant.
Thank you.
That's it.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Ryan. I reside at twenty Sorrento Road. I'm the owner.
Michael Brickley, R and B Home Improvement. I'm at eighty-seven Farm Hill Road in Wallingford.
Okay. Please explain your application.
Basically.
Could you pull the microphone nice and close so we hear you? That's okay.
Basically, we're attempting to replace the roofing systems currently over an area that developed over the years. We revised in the process of getting a building permit that we would have to have a survey performed. In so doing, we found out that the existing roof system encroaches into the zoning limits by a, I'm gonna say seven feet, for the sake of this conversation, if you will, please. Due to what had transpired over the years, it puts a little bit of a difficulty on my wife and myself in terms of just making a shift of the structure. The structure itself evolved after the pool was constructed in two thousand and one and was built away from it. I know it's not anyone's problem but mine, but that's how I got to where I am. So basically, I'm requesting that I be allowed to construct a new roof, replace the other roofing systems, so it's a little more cohesive with the, with the structure of the house, and attach it formally to the house. I prepared a letter. I don't know if you folks have had a chance to review it and digest it. The conflicts, I hope I explained, and probably when we originally submitted for the zoning application, did not provide enough information to the reviewers, and here we sit. Moving the, I'm gonna call it the pergola, the support columns, if I do shift them to the south, it encroaches on the steps, doesn't go into the steps, it's still outside the pool, but it plunks itself right in the middle of the steps to the pool. I have a handicapped son, who does not reside, but every weekend, he's there with his children. He uses that area of the pool to transition into the stairs. Can he still make that transition? Yes, it just makes it more difficult for him. That's the way it is there. The other shift of the, of the structure to the south was I've invested some monies in the underneath of it, and again, I know cost is not your underlying factor for a lot of these decisions that you make, but as I explained, my wife and I have saved up for this project, and now, if we were to undertake the task of relocating all of the appurances that are underneath it, counters, countertops, an island, would probably double the expected costs, making it very difficult for us as we've. costs, making it very difficult for us as we've just entered into retirement. Shifting it to the southwest, to the west also starts an encumbrance onto the pool. So I've kind of boxed myself into this area, by my own fault, but, and that's kind of the circumstances that I'm presented with currently. I still maintain a very clear access to the north of 13 feet from the gate opening to the fascia and 15 feet from the fence proper to the fascia. I can enjoy any truck, any vehicle. I can get full access to both myself and to my neighbors' needs. Right now, she was elderly, and I take care of her tree trimming, so we get full tree trimming trucks in there and everything like that. So we do have access. I think that's kind of about it, in terms of what I said.
So I have a couple, just a couple of questions. The pool was put in in 2001?
One, yes, sir.
And then after that, this structure was...
Yeah, we started, I cut all the frigging trees down in the lot, and they didn't have any shade, so, oh, let me put this pergola up. Started putting the pergola up, and that's started constructing things.
Yeah, you got to pull the microphone a little closer, so they can hear.
I'm sorry. So I put the pergola up due to the, well, cutting all the trees in the yard down for the luxury of the pool, to create some space of shade to enjoy from the pool in the sun.
And then, now you've come to want to do something with the top of the pergola?
Correct.
And they told you you needed A5 or A2 survey, or whatever it is?
Yes, sir, which I had performed.
Yep, and then this is how we came to this point.
Correct.
Anybody got any questions for the applicant?
Just, when you built the original structure...
Yes, sir.
Did the town, was the town aware of it when you originally, did you have a permit then?
I'm going to tell you no. The town, no, because the town was not made aware of it. It was a, it's a freestanding structure. It was not attached to the house. It was just a contagism, if you will, of... I can't plead ignorance. No.
Thank you. Thank you for your honest answer.
Anybody else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Bob, Prentice?
No. I'm seeing it.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Do you have anything further you'd like to add before I close the public hearing?
Just that we did circulate, as required by the town, to all of our neighbors, the correspondence advising them of what we were trying to do. I've had nothing but positive answers from the neighbors. I have nothing in writing, just conversations with them. I probably should have done it in writing, but it's been all positive, as we keep our yard in top shape and even stretch over and take care of our neighbors as well.
I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, the variance request for side yard of 13 feet to construct an attached pavilion is shown on zoning. Location survey, proposed pavilion, prepared for Stephen and Nancy Ryan, 20 Sorrento Drive, dated October 7, 2025, and submitted plans received October 15, 2025. So moved.
Second. Got to get my order here. Motion to approve, this would be Mr. Conroy first.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes to approve.
Ms. Raditz?
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Rusik?
Yes. Your variance request has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You as well.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as written, or are there corrections?
Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, we have another item on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
Consideration of the minutes for, consideration for the meeting schedule for next year. Make a motion to approve the meeting schedule as submitted.
Second.
I, question? Yeah, I just have a, I had an issue with September 21. I sent an email back on it. I didn't, did you?
I didn't get it, or I overlooked it, Mr. Gross. So, okay, so you're not available?
Correct.
Okay, we've got to...
It's a holiday.
Yeah, understandable, but if we could, so your attendance perhaps may not be there as long as everyone's aware, and if that's still something we want to set as our regular meeting schedule, then, you know, it's up to you all. So we have to submit this by middle of December, post it.
Yeah.
So do we want to change it, or do we want to hold it, and with Mr. Gross not being present, because he's observing a holiday?
I've got to be honest about this. I, we've never come across this. I don't know how we would handle it. I mean, the, the only times I think we've moved dates of our was because of the town having a holiday. I'm not against, I just don't know what, I don't know what the proper thing to do is.
Customarily, we follow certainly the town, you know, observances, and then with the understanding, of course, that board members that will have their own personal conflicts at times, as long as there's not a conflict of affecting a potential quorum where we want to potentially switch the date. So that'd be for you all to decide. But again, that's customarily what's been done in the past, is understanding there'll be absences, so.
I just know that other committees or boards have moved the dates. That's all. Not, not for me, but other members.
Yeah, like I said, we've never run into it here. I don't know what the proper right thing, wrong thing to be done. So I'm not, I mean, if everybody here wants to move it, I'm okay with moving it. I'll go with whatever anybody wants to say.
Yeah, no, valid point to bring it up. Like I said, customarily, the practice has been to observe the, the town observed holidays, unfortunately, which don't necessarily encompass a multitude of personal, you know, holiday schedules and observances. Should it affect more than one board member, maybe you want to consider moving it, but that's your decision. But that's been customarily what has we've done in the past.
Because this is the way I kind of roll, let's take a, what's everybody want to do?
I would, I would be okay with moving it to accommodate Mr. Gross.
Bob, is that what you'd like us to do? Are you...
I think it's, it's right for the public also, because you don't know who's coming in front of you that night either.
Fair enough.
You know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying for that.
So what date would we move it to? That's the next question.
The next night's available.
Is that a Monday?
Yes.
So we'd move it to Tuesday, like we've done with the other holidays.
The only, the only thing I think we got to find out is if there's going to be a room...
We have to make sure there's not conflicts with the council.
Well, we could do it in room 315. We just got to make sure there's a room available. But then, we got to find out if the recording guys are available. So is that something that...
Is that what you're proposing for the next day?
If we could.
That's absolutely fine with me. I'll just have to have you sign a fresh copy. We won't submit it until, if that's what you're all approving.
This is a rule. Council usually meets second and fourth Tuesday.
Correct.
So that would be...
Normally, it's not our, it doesn't conflict with us. It does conflict with planning and zoning, but this, this year it was different, because normally, we're here on Thanksgiving week, and we're a week earlier, however the calendar falls. So we'll find a space. Space to be determined, but if we would like that to be the night, make that motion, and I will amend the schedule.
So we're going to switch it to September 22? Is that what we're going for?
That would work perfect.
So I'm going to make a motion that we switch this September 21, 2026 meeting to September 22, 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's it. So we will get a new printed version and get it signed. Okay, Amy? Thank you.
You'll have to come sign it.
Yeah, I'll stop. It's not a big deal. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go.